Go ahead and start it tonight. First thing on our agenda is the role call. If I could have that done before you started your shooting.
Richard Seiler.
President.
Joe Mann.
Here.
Dale Robbins. DG Garcia. Jim Bonker. Paul Brown. Excuse me, Paul Brown was on. Kimball Big Horse. Charlie Jinks.
Is Kimball Big Horse online? Okay, thank you. First. For sure, business, we don't have any excuse accents for Kimball or Dale, so I will. We'll see if they show up or we'll handle that later. I'll go over the agenda and then we'll. Lisa's going to talk about our meeting tonight because we have three items on our docket and I. We want to move through them fairly quickly so we don't run out of time to talk about all of it. So.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, um, Richard Seiler, um. Because we. Oh. Yeah, everybody needs to put on their microphones, by the way. Because, uh, we have a hearing for our annual psycho amendments scheduled for September 13th. We really have to get through all three of these workshops tonight. We have three, three big topics. River District Open Space Zone, the landscape insect code. And then, um, he's gonna, uh, wrap it up with community events. So we're gonna hold each of those, um, workshops for 30 minutes and I will be timing when I will give whoever's presenting a five-minute warning. And, um, and then we're gonna move citizen comments up to after the workshops rather than giving you an opportunity to just pick on each workshop. We're trying to consolidate it so we can, we're sure, get through the whole, the whole, um, all three workshops. So, so we'll do that before we do the new reports, new reports, which may be, uh.
Barring.
So, yeah, I'll turn it over to you.
For more of the minutes. Is there any comments from the commissioners on the, on the minutes?
I'd like to.
Second.
If you don't favor for the last night, July 12th, we say aye.
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 Minutes are in the books. I'm not able to workshop, Lisa just said that, says comments she just talked about. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll have some reports for the commissioner of reports and then adjourned.
So the first workshop up is, uh, Joe Frank, if you can just a second to pull up his presentation.
Presenting very fast, you okay?
I'm sorry, I will, I will do my best to speak into the microphone. First up is Jim Frank, and give me a second, and I'm just trying to pull up his presentation. Please, uh, what, Jim has a question? Yes.
Just for, for the, uh, audience here. Remind everybody the role of this committee, the role of the city planning, the role of the council members. What they're supposed to do.
Yeah, so, um, uh, the planning commission is doing their due diligence to understand, um, wrap their minds around what the, what is being proposed. For amendments to the development code, et cetera. They will hold a hearing in September where they will make a recommendation regarding, um, uh, the amendments. Um, and there's a, there's a series of them, there's three that are city-initiated, there are, um, there are, uh, the, the two that are River District. There will be a hearing before the, before the hearing examiner specifically for the River District, oh, the RDO zone residing. And then all of the, all of the applications can be, hearing examiner will make a recommendation on specifically just the zoning amendment. And then all of them go to city council for a final, um, hearing that probably won't happen until November, December, it depends on how quickly. The hearing examiner turns around his, his recommendation. So that's, so that's the process at the end. And so again, the purpose of these workshops are really for the planning commission to get a better understanding of the code amendments proposed.
And your role?
And my role, um, so staff is responsible for processing the applications or permanent staff report. Um, looking at our comprehensive plans, my code, uh, our code policies, et cetera, looking at any legal issues that may be associated with it. We do not take a position for, um, in favor or against, um, these proposals. Our role is to provide an objective for what's happening and how it fits into just our code, et cetera.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, wait.
Could you move your microphone volume closer?
Yes, I can, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm losing my voice. But I didn't.
Good, I, should I ask a question? Who is the hearing examiner?
The hearing examiner contracted, um, by the city. It's actually Brian Higgin is the city Spokane hearing examiner, but we had, we contracted the city Spokane for that service. He's not available, we then go to the county, um, through their, and these are, uh, hearings, and I don't know why this is not coming up. It's on my screen, but it won't let me share.
Lisa, I think I'm okay without.
Why don't you go ahead and start it here?
Sorry about that, Jim.
I'll be, I'll be quick. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Frank, I'm a Greenstone Corporation, we're the ones that.
Is your mic on, Mr. Frank?
Well, I was looking to see, there was some place to turn it on and I didn't see anything, is, is it on or?
Doesn't sound like it is, you can rotate it around, I can see it, but. Should be about that way down.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Sorry, I apologize. So, uh, Jim Frank with Greenstone Corporation, we're the ones that are, are developing River District and we're the ones that have proposed that we have a residential, I mean, a River District Open Space Zone. And as you're aware, when the SAP for River District was approved, it has its own zoning qualifications and its own development regulations. And at that time, we didn't include a, a, an open space zone. The city has an open space zone in its normal, uh, complete, um, zoning code. And so as the project has progressed and more open space areas have been developed. And as, as a developer, we're transferring the ownership and management of all these common areas to the owners association. So that as Greenstone, we no longer control, legally control those areas. They're only controlled by the owners association. We felt that having an O-zone would provide some additional protection because those open space areas currently are zoned. Either residential, River District residential, or River District mixed use. And so in theory, they could be converted to a residential use in the future without any sort of a public hearing process, so. In any event, we, uh, felt that, um, there's added protection and, and so, and it's consistent with the rest of the zoning code that the city has. And we have, they have an O-zone, so that's what we're proposing. And we've identified those open space parcels that would be included in the O-zone. And included in that is the open space parcel that's owned by the, uh, along the trail, the power line east bend. Where we have the River District garden part is located there, so that's one of the parcels that would be rezoned to open space. We, um, I'm not going to go through, um, there's some pictures of the various open spaces there, which I think you've all seen before and I'm not gonna spend any time with those. I do want to, um, point out that we've made a couple of changes in the regulations, the development regulations related to the O-zone. One is that we've accepted the city's recommendation, the staff recommendation that we adhere to their new rules that they're developing. That's under agenda today relative to special events and, and community events. And so we're, um, we're, we've modified our, so that we'll follow those, those, whatever those new regulations are, we'll follow those. And we've had some conversations with the staff about that. The other thing that we've done is that we've added some additional development regulations related to, uh, set-in-place structures like. The, the shipping containers are set-in-place structures, so, um, I'd just like to go over those development standards that we've put in related to those structures. So we put in development regulation that they, that they can't be higher than 10 feet tall. We've put in a, a regulation that, um, they can't be located closer than 50 feet to a public road right-of-way. And that if they're less than 100 feet from a public road right-of-way, they need to be screened from view. And that screening would either be a side of a skirting fence of not less than six feet or an evergreen landscape buffer of not less than six feet tall and six feet wide. So, um, so that's intended to provide screening of those from a public group, a public road right-of-way. And then, um, we've also added some screening requirements when one of those structures would be located within 50 feet of an adjacent residential zone. So if they're located closer than 50 feet to an adjacent residential zone, then there has to be a permanent evergreen landscape buffer of not less than eight feet. Uh, and six feet wide and, um, and that landscape buffer would be required along the entire length of the building. That's facing the adjacent residential zone. And it shall be located within 10 feet of the face of the building, so if you have a structure, um, as we do there, for example. It's located within 50 feet of the residential zone and the entire length of that would have an eight-foot evergreen, uh, uh, landscape buffer. Uh, along the entire length of it, and that landscape buffer would be required to be eight feet high and, um. And located, you know, within 10 feet of the building, so it would be located adjacent to the building approximately the height of the building. And the full width of the building, so that would be an evergreen, so that's a landscaping standards that we added. And everything else is pretty much the same as we presented before. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but those are the changes that we made. Give feedback from that.
I had, uh. One, uh, a couple of comments, it was just, uh. I think it was a typo kind of thing under the, uh, definition of market garden in her last sentence there. Such buildings, structures, or shall not exceed, like, such buildings or structures shall not exceed, more around.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um. The other, uh, point here is that the, uh. I'm reading this correctly, I'm on 10-2L dash four, leak. Setback. So the setback, uh, is 10 feet, is that correct? In other words, uh. From, uh, from something that is residential mixed use, any structure in the open zone has to have a setback of 10 feet. Is that what I interpreted that correctly?
That's what I read. Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Then, uh, does that 10 feet exclude the buffer? It's a question.
Typically. Typically setbacks applied to structures.
Not the buffer.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then I think, uh, just to clarify a couple of things. For. RDO, so a fixed building height, uh, is still at 25 feet. Is that consistent with, uh, RDO, excuse me, with, uh, other open space within the city?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that it's consistent with accessory structures in the residential zone.
Okay.
I think actually that, I think I recall 35 feet in the O-zone where it's the height limit in the city's O-zone, I, I believe this is shorter than, than your.
Well, it is consistent with the surrounding, I actually.
Yes.
So those are my other questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have some myself, Jim, if I could go through, uh, back on your, on the matrix that shows the permitted uses. Uh, I'm, I'm just asking questions, community center, hall, club, you tend to talk about this, you know, the open spaces for community gatherings. Do you expect that community center where that would be a permitted use? I, because right now you say it's not. And I was wondering if you wanted that to be permitted or a, or a, what do you call it, a limited use?
Community.
I don't count that.
I, I believe it should be, I think community gathering would be a permitted use.
Yeah, but if you have community center, I'm sorry, under community recreation facilities, there's a community center, hall, club, if you wanted to, I don't know. You have that not permitted, I was wondering if you wanted that to be a permitted use. And the other one was under that community recreation facilities, and so there's a ring, this is participant and spectator sports facilities. And here you talk about, uh, recreational sports on open spaces allowed. You want that to be permitted or a limited use? You guys don't have to answer this tonight, but consider that. Yeah.
So you're, you're under the community recreation facilities part of the, you have.
Yes, I am, I am. And then there's another one that is on, on the last page of that, under manufacturing equipment industrial production, there's one of them called artisan craftsman live work. Do you expect that to be something you want to have in our community events? Do you expect that to have a community event that will have artisan or craftsman live work such as, um. An art event where the order are really doing art work at the.
If possible, yeah.
So, so you might look at that too, because right now it's not permitted. Okay. So, under, under your definitions of all three of them, I, I just went online and looked at definitions and I'm gonna just tell you what I saw. Community garden is a piece of land garden or cultivated by a group of people individually or collectively. But, uh, your definition doesn't quite do the singing, but it, it kind of does. Farm stand is a type of outlet where it usually sells produce directly from a gardener farm, open for duration of harvest season. I think you kind of covered that, but you also have these other things about, uh, staging of community events and mobile concessions in a grill farm stand. So my question is that, are, are you trying to do something where you would allow like a green bluff type business to operate? Where the, the garden center would have maybe donuts and pies and other things that are being sold? Is that what you mean by, by community events and mobile concessions on a farmer's stand?
It means that we might want to have a food truck. So, um, one of the things that, um, we'd like to do to help create that sense of community is. On the, uh, for example, on the, on the day when people pick up their vegetables, having a food truck so they can bring their family over, pick up their vegetables. And, and, and get, you know, a meal from the food truck like they do, for example, in a Rocky Hill Park on Thursdays, they have a food truck in music. And so the idea was that we could periodically have a food truck in music and that kind of thing there.
Would you think of that and harvest carnivals and stuff too, like they, they do up in Red Lock or any of those types of events?
We don't, we're not anticipating that now.
Okay, because I was just trying to figure out what the staging, you, you, in your definition, you had staging a community event, I was trying to figure out what that was.
If I may, uh, the, I have, I have a problem with that definition just because. If, if having a community event there, having a food truck is already allowed on the site, it's not part of the farm stand. Farm stand is a separate structure, it's almost like a embassy, it kind of sets together.
Yeah, I'm happy for you to, um, uh, correct that.
And that's what, that's when I looked at, I thought farm stand was a little bit.
Yeah.
Too much of other things trying to be included in there. And then a market garden, again, you have a lot of, a lot of information there, but it's, when I look at it, it's a relatively small scale production of fruits, vegetables, flowers. As cash crops frequently sold to consumers in restaurants, I think is the more simplified definition that I found, uh, a little easier for you. Like some of these things here, is it, I, I tell you, it is some of these things, uh, you, you just go into a lot of detail that I'm not sure you need to. But, but, uh, like the house or the building, I didn't quite get what that was about. And you guys may have found the definition somewhere, or this may be yours, I don't know. But one of the things I did is such, in the back it says such buildings or structures shall not exceed 1,000 square feet each. One of the things that that can lead to is you could have several of these on an area. And, and I'm going to say become overpopulated with structures or, or whatever, so I know each of them are relatively small, relatively, I mean. 1,000 square foot's a 10 by 100 foot building, so it's, you know, or, or something of that nature, so it, yeah. I, I'm not sure you've have given us, uh. To keep it from being overcrowded with those types of things by having that each in there, you know, not to, maybe it's 1,000 each and not to exceed 2,000 square by total or something in that.
Or, yeah, we'd be.
Or something.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't believe in these, in any of the park areas you'd ever probably exceed, say, four or 5,000 square feet total. So we'd be happy to have a, a maximum put in there.
I, I would like to see, see something on there.
Yeah.
Roddy, I, yeah, a farm stand, so that's the comments I had on that section.
I, I think that's our comments and we're open to a clarification of those definitions. The kind of events that we're seeing happening there are like a farm-to-table dinner, um, having music in a food truck periodically. Having education classes where you can come and learn about planting barley or harvesting onions or composting or that kind of thing. So we're not, we're not trying to have any sort of a carnival.
But you could separate that out from your open space as a, as an homage to an open space, right? Because you could do that at one of your parks or whatever.
You could do that in any park, yeah.
And, and not tie it up with a, a farm stand or tie it up with a garden.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
And then, this, this is on the page 203. This is the mobile food concessions, and I, I understand what you're trying to do in the open space. That flies in, in the face of what Liberty Lake just allowed here recently on food trucks where they have to be permitted, they have to be part of an event, they have to be something. You know, they have to be tied to a business or something there. I'm just. I struggle when, when we all said, as Liberty Lake as a whole, that's the way we'd like to see it. And then propose something different over there, it's kind of out of line with what we just went through as a, as a city to allow food trucks in the area. So I know you're asking for one food truck without permit, without, and to run from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but, but, uh, that, and for 90 days at a time, I think you have in here. But that kind of, recognize that flies in base of what we just, just approved for the whole city, so.
We're trying to make it simple, um. So that, um, we're not putting a burden, a permitting burden on the city and we're not creating a burden for the association or other people that want to have a small. One food truck kind of an event and trying to make it simple, so we encourage that kind of activity. So we're still saying they have to be registered, the food trucks still have to be registered with the city. So we're not preventing the registration, we're just saying that you don't, uh, we don't have to, if we're going to do that in a park. That we can have one food truck located in a park or one of these open space areas and we don't have to get a permit for that event. Unless it's over 100 people, because I think that, I'm correct, that's what the threshold will be. Is, um, we won't have to get a permit unless the threshold is, we're gonna, we expect to have an event that's over 100 people.
But I believe what we're trying to prevent is a food truck from pulling up to a, a, a place and just operating as a business. And I think the way this is written, that would be allowed for 90 days for a single food truck from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM every single day. The, the way I read what you've done in the open space, I think that would be allowed if, if this were to go through. Where, where, we're saying in Liberty Lake, what we have said, we didn't want to have a food truck that just operated on a piece of property. We wanted it to be associated with the business and with, or an event. And, and so. Just so you recognize that, yeah. You guys can propose what you want, but I'm just saying that's kind of where we were at here.
Yeah, I understand, in this case, it's associated with, would only be, it'd have to be approved by the homeowners association because it's their. Yeah, I understand. In this case, it's associated with, would only be, it has to be approved by the homeowners association because it's their property and it's only on open space land. I do understand the issues that you're trying to deal with.
Right.
You don't want a food truck to show up on some, some property and just have a food truck out there every day. This would only be on the association land and would be, uh, it would only be authorized if the association authorized it.
Yeah, and I think also for events, I think we were looking at, you know, there's events usually have court bodies and stuff like that where maybe a food truck won't have those facilities and you get into all kinds of things, you can just park something there for ninety days straight and operate every day from eight to ten PM. And, and I think that's why we went to the way we did it, if, if I recall correctly. Um, and the last comment I'll have is, is both these are, on the last one on buffers and screenings, we talked about distances, the buffer requirements are based on a distance of, of a site distance of a hundred feet or I believe, yeah, a site distance located at fifty feet. A hundred feet, fifty feet is not that far for the eye of the sea. So I, I would propose on the middle of this thing that you would eliminate the, the, if it's less than a hundred feet and if it's less than fifty feet from the road or the, the, the other property, just make it a requirement. You will, if it's adjacent to the residential area or adjacent to where your site from the road, you will put a buffer on because a hundred feet is not that far of the sea. So it's still, it's still trying to help out the concept of, do we want a shipping container to be front and center on our, in our city, that would, I think a hundred feet is still front and center in our city in my opinion, because it's, it, I mean, two, two house residences about a hundred and twenty feet in our city, so on the front, and that's not very far, so.
So I'm not, okay.
Um, so I, I eliminate your distance, I just make it, uh, buffers required. If you see it from the road, a buffer is required, if you see it from a, a residential, a buffer is required.
I had the same comment, so, uh, Tennessee well seven C.
I, I, yeah, I said, I just lined out from you and I lined out if located less than a hundred feet and on the second one, I lined out less than fifty feet from it. And then, so if you're adjacent to our, uh, a residential in our DER zone, or if you're adjacent to a, a street, you would be screening. Which means you're screening.
Yeah, and I guess it just, what is, what is adjacent to the street, if you're, like, there. So there, um, you said, if you could go back to the other slide, there's a slide that had a map on it. So there, um, down at the bottom there, where the greenhouse is, there's a, um, there's a, um, uh, set place container there, that one would be located within, I think it's within fifty feet of the street, so that one would be screened. The other one is probably three hundred feet from the street. So we're proposing that that one would have the, the buffer, but it's within fifty feet of the property line of the residential zone, so that one would have the screening on the left-hand side of it on that picture. And that's where the screening would be. Now, you can also screen it on the other end of it. Is that what you're saying, you'd also?
That, that's kind of what I was thinking, is that just eliminate the distance and just screen it. You know, that, that, just a thought.
If I may, in other parts of our code, we use this standard, is it this physical residential property or the coverage?
You say that, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, there, it, it just, it gets a little complicated because here, for example, um, you could, you can actually see the right-hand side of it too, if it's a little bit of an angle. So you could see the right-hand side, so that mean you're going to put the screen around all four sides of it?
Well, that particular one, that's that way item just by the garden there, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is that in a container?
The one I know.
I, I would say that, looking at where the houses are located and if they can see, if all those houses can see it, I would say the, the bottom end and, uh, looking at the picture, the left side of that would have to be screened. And, and maybe even the other end, because there's houses that go up and down the street that we'd be looking at the end of that container, so you'd almost have to do three sides based on the residential. Again, I, I'm trying to just, my eyes go a lot farther than a hundred feet or fifty feet. And, and fifty feet is not, I mean, that's like right next door, that's, if you think about a property that's, whatever, our properties are mine's, I think about sixty-five feet wide and, uh, it'd be like being right next door to my house.
I don't have a problem in this case of screening three, the three sides of it.
Yeah, and, and so I would eliminate that and maybe take up the, like, like Lisa said, it's some type of, if it's on a site where you can see it from a road or from a, a resident, then you screen.
I mean.
I'm, I'm trying to help. The issues last meeting we had were very strong, and yes, I don't like looking at containers out there. Uh, uh, my, my mind was saying, okay, can we go to a little, a, a, a nice looking garage that this container slides into, but I, I, you know, that's a little more expensive, but I, I'm just saying maybe another way is to maybe get that with the screening, but eliminate that distance part.
I mean, I honestly believe that, like, in the city center, town center park, you have two set in place structures in that, in that town center park right now, the city does. And they're, and they're wood structures, they're not, they're not a metal structure by the shipping container, they're, they're wood structure. But honestly, what's the difference? You know, I mean, honestly, there's not a lot of difference between two or three hundred feet.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, I, I'm not getting it in there, but I'm just trying to see if there's a way to help satisfy the the concerns that were presented with, with, uh, so if it's in the line of sight, screen it. And maybe if you can't screen it, maybe it doesn't bother you there, you know?
I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's just a thought, I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to help, I'm getting that concept that we, we, that, that community has expressed their concerns that
Yeah.
that shipping containers are not their favors, so.
There are about five minutes left on this.
That, that's all the comments I had.
Thank you.
I only have one, the, the market garden concept, uh, concerns me, um, because that really is what it, in essence, doing is allowing a commercial operation in a residential area. And that concerns me.
Well, it's already permitted, so I mean, we're not doing something, this isn't permitting something that's not already permitted, that, the, the, the little farm, market farm, community garden farm that we have there now, already permitted. And the, in, it's not there to, it's not, um, it's, it's there for educational purposes, it's there for community amenity purposes. It is not there to have a profit-making business, that's not the purpose of this. And, but it's already permitted, so.
I understand, but when you start selling to restaurants and stores and, uh, other, I, my understanding was that was for the benefit of the residents, not to be a commercial operation.
It's, the idea of selling to local restaurants is so that the local restaurants and the food that they serve in the community has access to locally produced agriculture. That's the purpose of that, rather than that food being bought from Cisco and in, in the restaurant, it's a minor thing, but there are a lot of small little, um, there are a lot of small little farms in the region that sell greens, for example, the HJ's. HJ's buys their greens right now from two or three other little market farms.
I understand, but those are not in the River District. And I don't understand why we need another one in the River District.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 I don't want to confuse this because it's already permitted, so, um, you don't, you can eliminate it out of this, but that's not going to stop it because it would be ground buffered, then it would be, it would technically be a non-conforming use, I guess. But if you, it, it's permitted already by the existing zone and it's already there, so.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, sure. The, the buffers proposals, I think, make a lot of sense. But in the last meeting, you talked about how do we move these structures away from that residential property line? So they're not seen as encroaching on their environment, is that possible? Keep these buffers in place, the landscaping, which is fine, I think that's a good start. But how do we move these structures? And my understanding is that the containers are temporary, is that true? They're temporary structures?
So they were permitted as a temporary use, our, our code allows them temporary structures
Okay.
for one year.
For one year.
And however that expired and it's actually in, um, it's actually going to hearing on a appeal of the notice of violation of the issue.
Right. So.
So they're, they're not, at this point in time, they are not permitted.
Correct. Resolution of what kind of structure you would need for farm activity has yet to be decided.
Well, so, I, I, I mean, yes, so the hearing has not been decided yet.
That's correct.
Uh, staff's position on it is that as long as they propose a structure that, um, uh, they could propose accessory structure that meets architectural design standards and that would be allowable, um, in support of the community garden, which is specifically allowed by the current River District Code.
So you could take a, you could take a steel container and you could modify that container regardless of the location, and I want to use the term, I used this a couple of times in the past, you could put lipstick on it, okay, you could dress it up, so.
But you still have to meet the architectural requirements in the River District.
But it's possible.
That, that's, it's, it's possible, it's possible.
Okay, okay.
But, but it has to meet the legal.
Okay, and that's why I was kind of thinking you could build a, what I call a garage and slide it into the garage. Then you'd have, you'd have the security that he's looking for, I think is what he said last, last week, is those steel structures containers, the like awesome security for what's inside of them, but you'd also have, uh, what would look like an outbuilding on, on a piece of property.
But moving more away from that, they've already permitted a storage structure for the community farm, that was permitted.
And a greenhouse.
And a greenhouse that is also permitted.
So we can build another building, if we, we have, when we designed this area, we provided in addition, in addition to the power line easement, we provided an additional fifty feet on, that, that's located on the west side. So there's power line easement and then there's another fifty feet. And that is the fifty feet, if any structure has to be located in that fifty feet, because it cannot be located in the, it can't be located, uh, underneath the power line.
So you have some flexibility on where you would ultimately put these structures?
What, within that fifty feet.
Truths.
Right. But you can't move them, you can't move them on the west side of the, you can't move them on the east side of the trail, for example.
I agree.
Because all you're doing is putting it in, because those are all going to be houses over there, so.
Even within fifty feet, however, you'll still need to get some okay from Avista?
No, no, we don't need okay from the Avista, only if it's within the Avista easement do we need permission from Avista. We don't need permission from Avista in the other fif, the other fifty-foot corridor there. And, and we would have to be set away from the property line, whatever the requirement is, five or ten feet from the property line, whatever the set that requirement is.
But if the zoning agreement said to you, you need to move these structures away in the fifty feet, that's doable?
Well, they're already moved, they're already moved. That container there is moved, it on the very edge of the easement already. The, the, the power line easement is already right on the edge of the power line easement. So that container can't be moved any further away from the property line than it is right now. We set it as far away from the property line as we could.
So that's a good, probably forty feet away from the property line?
Yes.
Going east?
Yeah.
Good, but remember, forty feet's not very far. And it's really not.
It's a good distance.
Yeah.
How many containers are on property right now?
There's two of them connected together, there's two containers that are connected together in one structure and there's one other one down by the greenhouse.
And so what would we do with the, uh, collection of containers that are located towards the road that are housing all the Christmas decorations?
Those, there's already a program, uh, we, there's already a program between that nonprofit and city, they're, they're building a new permanent structure for those to be located in.
Okay, okay. Looking at the definitions. Sorry, you okay?
Yes.
Looking at the definitions here, additional definitions. Um, I've been listening to some of the comments today with regard to what this is. How do you, how do you characterize this garden? Is it a, is it a community garden or is it a market garden, or is it a combination? And, and lastly, could you then create a definition that suits this use?
Um, I, I think this is a community, you know, it's, we, we, the entity that we set up to manage this is called the River District Garden Farm. And I think that's what I'd say it was, a small garden farm, community garden farm. And in time, over time, we're probably still sorting out what the best way to manage it is. It's not easy running an agricultural endeavor, even my own, you know, even my own garden in my own yard, it's a lot of work now. It's a lot of work to plant them, it's a lot of work to harvest, it's a lot of work to wash and clean, it's a lot of work to keep the weeds down, it's just a lot of work. And, and so we have about twenty volunteers from the community that participate with the, with, with Whitney Jocks, who's the, who's, who's managing the, the farm, but it's a lot of work. And so there's, over time, it might evolve a little bit in terms of how it's actually run and how it's actually managed. And it could evolve, for example, into a situation where um, community members might come in and take a fifty-five, fifty-foot bed and then actually farm fifty, fifty-five, fifty-foot bed, so we're just trying to provide a little bit of flexibility. There's, I'm not trying to take up all of your time here, I know you're trying to end this, so, anyway, just, um, not, what you see out there is really what it is and, and I don't, it's intended to be an amenity to the community where people can gather, people can volunteer, people can learn, people can get access to locally grown cultures and we think it's a very important thing going forward in our society.
Okay, we're going to close questions at this point, so if you guys have any more questions in our, in our information numbers, just write them down and we can share them with, with, uh, Mr. Frank and, and the rest of us, okay? So if you have any more you want to ask, let's do that and move on to our next.
I will say, I will say that, um, again, you have the opportunity to ask these questions as part of your, as part of your deliberations.
Yeah, for sure. But if you want to get something, Mr. Frank, we can always do that out.
I, just one last question, you talked about selling to HJ's, for example. As a percentage, what of the total yield of farm, how much of that is actually going to commercial establishments now and how much is going to resident, residents in the area to buy?
The residents in the area buy a hundred percent of it right now, we're not selling anything to HJ's or any other restaurant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on, thank you. Landscape again. Thank you.
You're looking for, you're looking for one second while I fill it up?
If you don't start your introduction, go ahead, like she pulls that up, if it, if it doesn't impact you.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the Plan Commission, I'm Mike Carroll. Uh, landscape architect and planner with MTLA here in Liberty Lake. Uh, I'm representing, um, the proponent, Greensville Corporation, in, uh, proposing two different amendments to the River District, well, what started out as two different amendments to the River District SAP, but what is now uh, amendments for the River District landscaping portion and amendments to the City of Liberty Lake sign code. And so one of the things that we've done going through this process, which has been a great process to date, was work with the, uh, the staff both on the landscaping portion and on the, uh, on the signage. Instead of proposing a, a standalone River District sand code, we're now proposing some minor minor amendments to the City of Liberty Lake's sign code to, to kind of be an interim solution to some of the challenges that, that, uh, we have found trying to implement or get signage approved in River District, and then, uh, look forward to engaging with the city and, and Plan Commission on a complete revision of the sign code, which, which our understanding is will be in, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, so I'll start off with, so that gives you a kind of the overview, uh, we'll jump into landscaping, go ahead, next slide. So one of the things that we've, we've done, we spent quite a bit of time working with, with staff on simplifying what we're asking for within the, the landscape code, and also uh, in, in terms of overview, one of the things that we've done is, is, is brought in some of the city's, uh, landscape code, uh, language into the River District landscape code, and we think that's a good improvement as well, so, uh, just briefly, we've got some additional requirements for landscape plans in terms of calculations to show, basically show our work in terms of what we're, what we're providing to meet the requirements of the code, uh, bonding and insurances, which I talked about the last time, going to a nine month period instead of the, the current six month, basically because of weather constraints and material availability, and alternative, uh, interior parking area landscaping, we've modified that whole section, uh, that into, including the, uh, city's, uh, language for that, revising that parking lot landscape then to better accommodate storm removal maintenance, but also alternative interior parking lot, which is consistent with the current city code, as suggested by staff, next slide. And then, in terms of the various different perimeters under, under F1, 2, and 3, uh, as I talked about the last time, you know, creating some, some definitions to clarify where those areas are as well, next slide. So both the perimeters adjacent to the public rights away, perimeters not adjacent to the public rights away, and then the perimeters adjacent to the structures, again, to clarify what those orders are to make, to, in an attempt to make, clarify what the discussion between the designer and, and city staff would be so that we can facilitate approval of plans, uh, more quickly, next slide. Um, one of the things we did eliminate is the mixed residential zone buffering because we only have that in one location in River District, it's between the, um, the town center and the, and mixed residential, and it really didn't mean anything, and it certainly becomes a little bit more consistent with the city's, uh, required, current requirements for the rest of the city, uh, clarification of screening mechanical equipment, changed it from ground level, um, changed it to at ground level, uh, the intent of the screening is, is to screen all mechanical equipment that is mounted on the ground, uh, and then we added preventing chain link fences with slots from meeting the screening requirements, which was not included before, next slide. Landscape materials, just reinforcing the, the, uh, the desire to make sure that landscape plans include, adapt, or adapt the plant material, which is very common, changing the size, uh, within the River District, the deciduous tree requirements for two inches to inches and three quarters, which is consistent with the city's, uh, current code as well, spacing and location of street trees, some clarification of the offsets, uh, from various different things, we included fifteen feet from any light fixture, not just streetlights, uh, to include that in parking lots, one of the things that, that we found is that too often a, a tree will be located in a parking lot, maybe it conflicts with a utility or a light, um, and five foot minimum from underground utilities, ducts and non-irrigation pipes as well, so next slide. So signage, so what, what we did, we spent quite a bit of time working with staff, and like I said, we, we threw out the whole River District sign code that we, we proposed and submitted earlier this year and have identified some very specific things that we've, existing state of Liberty Lake's sign code, that we would like to see, or like to discuss to see changes to, and worked with, with staff on that as well, so next slide. One of the biggest, and we talked about this in detail last time, is, is issues with sign boards, uh, A board signs, uh, six square feet, that's a two by three sign board, which is A board, which is the typical commercial size of them, um, one of the things that we're, we proposed is to not make them, uh, not make, make those signs be required to have a, have a permit, and so that's one of the, the key issues, uh, things that we've deleted from the city code, and that's certainly a lot of discussion about that, uh, temporary banners on streetlight fixtures, not with C gates or feet are allowed without a permit, one of the things that, and temporary community banners may include sponsorships, uh, with sponsorships less than twenty-five percent, one of the things that we recognize and, and staff commented on is that, that banners hung on streetlights need to, need to be identical, the streetlights need to be structurally able to support those, and so that would be something that would be, be part of the, the light when it's submitted, that it was capable, you know, capable to have a banner mounted on it, so that'd be part of the original approval, so that would have to be, uh, included in any, any, you know, discussion of putting banners on streetlights, streetlights currently in, in River District, in the town center portion of it, have those mounted available on them already, they come that way, next slide. Uh, temporary land development signs, trying to, to clear this up, you know, as we're going forward, to, to make it so that, that signs for the development that, that are not necessarily, picking up the whether it's an off-premise sign or not off-premise signs, so allowing thirty-two square feet of signage per acre of development, as the, as River District develops out, obviously the number of signs gets, gets fewer and fewer, so next slide. Signs permitted in all zones with connection with specific uses, temporary signs over eight square feet require a temporary sign permit, so if it's a bigger sign than eight square feet, it needs a temporary sign permit, temporary real estate sign limited sites to six square feet from five square feet, um, temporary sign permit required for signs, again, over eight square feet, uh, next slide, we try to make it consistent on the eight square feet throughout, uh, real estate, open house, perpetual signs, temporary sign permit required for signs over eight square feet, if it's smaller than that, not a temporary sign permit, uh, permanent residential subdivision, area name signs, metal allowed, that's a change in the material, uh, adding metal to the, uh, excuse me, does the material allow for those signs, next slide. Communities event signs, signs, uh, six square feet from, so moving it up to six square feet from five square feet again, that two by three signs, so A board signs, and no permit for signs less than, than eight square feet as well, next slide. In terms of in, kind of the commercial areas, wall signs per use, uh, we modified the, the table, uh, suggesting that thirty-two square feet for schools and public uses and offices and commercial uses was a, a more appropriate size, certainly that's, that's something that could be discussed in, in greater detail, again, that's like a four by eight sign, um, blade signs, uh, this is what the key area is that we'd like, uh, that we'd like to have adopted, having a max area of three, thirty square feet, so it would be, you know, just, just rough, could be three by ten on the side of a building, that side above the sidewalk could be twenty feet, so that if you think of, think of it as being on a, um, a two-story building, could be, two-story building could be twenty-four feet or so, um, so that would mean that the max height, not that it could be twenty feet tall, but it, max height above the sidewalk would be twenty feet, uh, top of the sign not extend above the roof line or carpet wall, regardless of the number of stories, um, deleted the multi-story design requirement, and then each business in the building permitted a blade sign, next slide. So these are some examples of blade signs, um, the first, first one on the left shows a sign that, that's up in the second story area, um, and so that's, again, is to create some uniqueness, to, to create visibility for business with very different styles of blade signs, next slide. Primary wall clarification, primary walls being walls that are parallel to, it's based driveway, alleyways, pedestrian in particular, and parking areas, one of the challenges is that if you have an internal courtyard or an alley that is a pedestrian alley, which, which is one of the things that, that is envisioned in the portion of River District, um, we wanna have some clarification on what that wall is, it could be a primary wall, uh, again, continuing on with the blade signs, bringing those consistent, and again, business A boards making that consistent as well, uh, one of the things that, you know, we're trying to, to find the right answer to is if you have a, have a block of, of building with a bunch of different users in it, the one sign would be allowed for fifty feet of primary building wall or one sign for business as a minimum, so allowing businesses to, you know, to have equal access to, uh, A board sign, um, and no, again, no sign permit application for A board sign, next slide. A clarification of the sign setback, ten feet from the curb or edge of pavement, um, and then sign area calculations, one of the things about, um, signs or elements on the side, sides of building, uh, having an artistic image would not be included in the sign area calculation, and it's similar to what, what the city has in the code right now for a, a sign on a window, for instance, it has the text, and, and so there's a graphic in the city's sign code that kind of breaks that out, so, uh, we're open for those conversations as well, next, next slide. So I didn't, I covered just about everything, but I, I went pretty quickly, um, so I look forward any, any questions or comments?
Should we just start with one or the other first, and so let's go with the, the landscape one?
Okay.
Any, any comments from our commission here on landscape items that were presented? I don't believe I have any on that either, uh, about signs, sign issues that you guys saw, comments, questions?
I, I think it would be a good idea, as we talked about this at the last meeting, are you currently working on a revised sign ordinance for the city?
So we are, we have been on budget refresh for this year, a capital project, seeing fund, uh, to fund that, so yeah, that is the intention.
Okay, so we would have a citywide?
Yes.
Sign ordinance?
We have a citywide sign ordinance now, proposing changes in the ordinance.
To update it.
It will be updated next year, yes.
Okay, how much at present, do you see many conflict between what is on the books today and what Mr. Carroll is proposing for River District?
Well, he's not proposing it for the River District, he's not proposing it for citywide, and I think my comments were embedded in the document, I had so many comments about the number of signs, the difficulty of.
We can't hear.
I had a number of comments on the number of signs, the difficulty enforcing some of this, one of the problems with exempting all signs under eight square feet is that, um, every sprinkler, grow out sign that you have, every political sign can go anywhere within the right of way, right now, we, we prohibit signs in right of way, except specifically for community events, we do allow A board signs, uh, adjacent to businesses, and it is a little restrictive the way it's worded now, and that certainly could be expanded right now, I think it has to be, it's supposed to be okay within twelve feet of the business entrance, but at the same time, it does still have to be on private property or on the sidewalk in a way that's not blocking pedestrian access or, um, uh, appropriately be a accessibility. So we do have some limitations on that, but again, I wanna say this, that, um, this, this will open the embarrassed box in terms of the, um, the signs under eight square feet, and therefore, we, as it is, we, our street crew on a regular basis aren't removing all those, uh, those signs, and, and if they can't remove them, it's just for the media proliferation.
And that's kind of those, uh, buy your house signs or mattresses for sale signs, all those general ones that you see just pop up of people that, I don't know whoever calls those numbers, but I'm sure there must be people that do, because they put them out there, and that's kind of why we keep a permitted thing, so that we don't populate our world with those kinds of signs out there, that there's some control on that. And, and I, I really, one of my comments is, is Lisa's comment too, is the one that has, uh, I, I forget what it was, but those, the thirty-two square foot or acre, and Lisa made it pretty clear on some of those, is that there's, there's a lot of acre, acreage, not just in the River District, but also on, on, uh, along, always gotta get it through Vista or, or Apple Way, that you could, you could literally put, I don't know how many acres are out there, but there's a lot of them, which means there could be a huge amount of thirty-two square foot signs, just think of going down the street, buying out home depots by wood to make a bunch of, bunch of signs, because that's what you could get there, and so, so I, that's, I concur with Lisa on that one too, is that this could, uh, cause a lot of signs to pop up in our, in our world if, if somebody that's, especially a developer wanted to put them out, or these, these businesses that wanna sell mattresses and buy your house or whatever it is, and those are the two I commonly see, but.
Would it be possible to do a matrix that compares the existing ordinance the city has to what you're proposing?
I think by edit, that's in front of us.
What we have before you is a redline version of it, so you can see what it is they're proposing to change.
Okay. On signs.
Oh, I understand that, but, however, it's sometimes it's easier to understand it when it's in a graphic format and a matrix, so on one column you have what the city provides, and on the adjacent column, what you're proposing, so it's easier to understand that there's a conflict and what the modification is, just a suggestion, might be easier for everyone to do that.
Yeah, I think going, going back to the thirty-two foot, thirty-two square foot signs, one of the things that I, I think we're open to is some kind of limitation within, are they spaced within so many feet, or they, you know, something that makes sense, but we're trying to get, um, signs that have been, for instance, in the River District that have been used for years and years and years to be allowed, and so they were recently not allowed, so, and, so going through that, so trying to, trying to get it so we, we create a category assignment that is allowed within the city and makes sense.
I do have one question on the artistic item, so if you play, and I'm just gonna use Safeway for example, Safeway has their big S symbol, and then they also have the word Safeway, so if I made a sign that was twenty feet by twenty feet that had the S on it, and then a little sign that met the criteria for Safeway, I think you're saying that artistic is the S, and that would be in the sign sizes, and so you could put a, a trademark, I guess it's called, if I, if I got that right, you could put that on your sign for a business that could be just huge, because it's not included in the square foot inch.
If I made, I made, the sign code actually is explicit that logos are considered a sign, so yes.
So what is an artistic, maybe that's better, better I read that definition then.
So the, um, so the image, and that's not included in your package because we didn't, for whatever reason, we didn't pick up the graphics of that, so, but I think it is, maybe, um, if you look at, on page three dash five zero, for window signs, so our intent is to make the, the wall signs similar to the regulation of the, the window sign, so you look at that, um, and there's a big graphic with Skies Pro Golf Shop and Wilson, so there's So there's a calculation of what is the sign and what is the graphic. And so that's the intent.
For what it's worth, we already interpret our code that way. We've already interpreted that way.
For wall signs as well?
Yes.
Okay. So then there's no additional description necessary in that one.
And maybe not, but I, the window, luckily our buildings aren't so large that we have these windows that could be billboard size. But the artistic design could be a billboard size, is the way I look at it, because there's no, there's no limit to what you put on that that we don't include. And maybe this place is basically what these essentially forces, but at the same time, I worry that a wall sign could be, get too big. Just because someone wants to put a graphic on there, an artistic graphic, so we can get the largest possible sign that we put on the wall to advertise their business.
If I may, so the example I would give, what I would offer to you, is what you see on some of the older buildings in Spokane where they have an exposed brick wall, and they have containers on there. And maybe a portion of that is a sign, but most of it is an artistic image. It's a painting. It's street art. And I think that that's the attempt. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, that is the intent. It's not, not the Nabisco signs that were painted at the turn of the last century. They're still on, on wall, but, but signs that have a minor portion, much like the graphic on 3 dash 5 zero, which it defines that Steve's Golf Shop is the sign, and the background is the artistic portion of it.
With no limit to that size, except building, building is your limit.
Just as, as there's no, as Lisa stated, there's no limit to the windows either. So we're fine on not changing that, as long as the code supports it as written out.
Yeah. I had no more comments. Anybody else have comments on this one? Thank you. I will always give a chance if you're gonna start if it doesn't disrupt. Be proud of you.
Right when I start talking. Okay. So at the last workshop I presented, I started with this slide, which kind of shows the whole, all of the different facets of what kind of go into the community event process update. So this time, I'm going to focus exclusively on the code changes that we're going to ask this body to make decisions on. So this is kind of the whole picture, but the items in bold are the ones that we're going to be asking you guys to make decisions on. So that's where I'm going to focus. So we'll start with definitions. So these are the two definitions that we're looking to change, community event and public assembly. So for the community event changes, what I'm, what we're looking to do is really drill down to the part of what, what is going to trigger the requirement for the permit, which is if the event is likely to have a significant, a direct significant impact on city resources. So that's really where we're looking at if a permit is going to be needed, is could this event trigger a need for above average use of city services? I'm also proposing that we kind of remove the specific examples of the events, because those change over time, and just provide a more general definition of certain types of events that could qualify as a community event. And down under public, public assembly is the removal of the requirement for a permit. We talked about this last time that, and there was some concern expressed about removing the permit requirement. So once we get further into the community event side of it, I think you'll see that most of the things that would qualify as a public assembly that we would permit would be included in a community, would be considered a community event. We have some language in there that protects free speech. So if it's something that's designed to be expressly expressing ideas or thoughts, they would still require a permit, but we wouldn't move all the permit fees. So there wouldn't be an obstacle that way to having that type of event. And it also exempts in our community event code language, it exempts lawful picketing on sidewalks, so that activity would still be protected. So the next one we're going to pull up is zoning matrix. And you'll see we removed public assembly and special events from the matrix. They'll both be regulated based on the community event definition and code section versus the zone that it's in. So it'll be regulated independent of the zoning category. And these changes also will apply to the, will apply to the River District. So the next kind of set of changes will be changing the limited use section of all the different zones. I did not, this is an example of the limited use section. They're all pretty similar. So you'll see under mobile sales and concessions, we're just, I'm proposing that we remove the word special for community events. If they're to say special community events implies that there are certain community events they would be allowed and certain ones they wouldn't. And all community events are special. So it would, it would apply to that. And then again, just removing the public assembly and seasonal and special events, special events from the use matrix also removes it from the limited use section, because there wouldn't be those additional conditions. So this is really where the significant changes happen, is in the 10 for I miscellaneous permits. Specifically in the temporary use permit section, and then down at the bottom, you'll see where we added the community event section. So that's going to be the brand new code section. So within the temporary use permit section, there are four subcategories. The seasonal and special event will be deleted entirely. So temporary sales office or model home will be the first one that's listed there. And we're not proposing any changes to the temporary sales office. The next one is the temporary buildings. You'll see that we added some small clarification in there that will allow storage containers to be used as a temporary ability for active construction projects to allow people to store tools and materials during an active construction project. And then the next section is mobile sales concessions, and there are, there are some changes in that section to support the community event permit section. I'm sorry, I know this is extremely small and all of them won't be this way, but, and there's a readable size in your packet. But as you can see, as you go through, it just adds the term storage container to the certain types of uses that are allowed as a temporary building. And you can see added under the end that it's, the primary use is either already developed or under construction. So that allows that for projects that are getting underway. Under mobile sales concessions, there are three subsections. The first one is the mobile food service establishment, which is essentially geared towards food trucks. You'll see we took out, I, we took out the kind of list right there, because a temporary carnival, a parking lot sale, or a nonprofit fundraiser would likely fall under the community event permit. So I just took the list out and just left it at the broad community event. And I did the same thing for the second section. So the second subsection is mobile sales booths, which would be like a vendor booths at farmer's market, those types of things. Again, I just clarified that those types of activities would be considered a community event, so you don't need to provide the list. And then section three is where it kind of says that if you're having these independent parts of your event and they're all part of a community event, you don't have to permit them separately. You can permit them all as part of the community event. And then just putting up the language to make sure that we're consistent using community versus special or seasonal event. So this is really the centerpiece of the changes. And there was no good way for me to get all of the code language onto slides that were readable and would be considerate of our timeframe. So this is the list of the different sections, and I'll just give a brief overview, and then you can kind of go through if you guys have specific questions. So the first one is a purpose and intent statement. This really serves two purposes. The first is when events kind of fall in what I call the gray area, when they live in the gray, and we're not quite sure how to permit them, or we're not quite sure what's, what we should be requiring. Our purpose and intent statement really gives us kind of those guiding beacons of when, essentially when do we care? And when do we need to be involved? And this tells us, this having it written out as far as what we, what our purpose and what we're trying to accomplish helps us when we get to situations that aren't clear cut. It also provides us some defense should someone challenge the things that we're requesting from them. If we are requiring something from someone and we can't tie that back to our purpose and intent statement, then then we need to question why we're requiring that. But it provides us the defense should someone push back and say, we don't think that this is necessary. And we can point to why we're permitting these in the first list. The second one is a permit required. So it just essentially establishes that if you're having a community event, the permit is required. It's just a kind of a codification of the rule, if you will. The section C is permit, permit exceptions. There's seven of them. It lists the different types of activities that would not require a permit. Notably, the lawful picketing on sidewalks. That's where that one lives. Section D is the insurance requirement for community events. This is again, just codifying the standard that we already have that states that the insurance requirements for events will be based on what's recommended from our risk management company, and that the city needs to be named as an additionally insured. Section E will be traffic control. We currently require a traffic control plan if you're blocking a sidewalk, a parking lot, or a bike lane. Just to make sure that pedestrians and pedestrians and vehicles and everybody is safe. It also, this provision also provides staff the ability to charge for these services if these services are provided by city staff. Section F lists everything that needs to be included in your submittal in order for it to be, the application to be considered complete, so we can launch a review. Section G, the permit review process, codifies that we need the application, when we need the application materials, we've set a date of 45 days in advance of the event, so that if there are changes or if any of our reviewing partners want changes, there's opportunity for us to provide those requests to the applicant for them to change them, and then for the, for another review cycle. So it just gives us a little bit more time to go through that. It also tells us what type of application process in our code that these people need to go through, which is the exam process. So sections H and I are the approval and denial criteria. The approval criteria is where I incorporated the existing standards for seasonal and special events, so that temporary use section A, those standards I incorporated into the approval criteria. And then the, the denial criteria will potentially be a helpful tool for staff, because right now we really don't have objective criteria by which we can say no. It creates, it's a gray area that just having some clarification will provide staff a little bit more of the rules of what is allowed and what's not allowed. Similar to that is the revocation section. We currently don't have anything that expresses authorization of when, after a permit has been issued, under what circumstances can we revoke that permit? So this kind of provides us with the rules that we have to play by and the applicants have to play by. Section K outlines the process for an applicant to appeal the denial of a permit. And section L outlines what the fees are, and how people can go about getting those fees waived. It also is where we state that if you're exercising your first amendment, that those fees don't apply to you. Oh, and then in this section, we also, it also gives us the mechanism for the city to recoup any costs that we expend in support of an event that's not a city sponsored event. So sometimes the city sponsors and works with applicants and it's a, it's a joint venture, and other times it's not. It's exclusively an individual's event, and there's city resources that are used to support that. And so that gives us the mechanism to recoup those costs. Do they have?
Yeah. Under permit exceptions, you have your lawful picketing on sidewalks. Can you give me an example of unlawful picketing on sidewalks?
Well, the first one that comes to mind is when you're blocking the sidewalk from other people being able to use it. And so you, you're allowed to picket on the sidewalk, but you're not allowed to block the sidewalk because it's a public facility. So people are still allowed to walk past you without you blocking them. That is, that would be one example that I could go off the top.
Public, public disturbance, if you actually, if your actions rise to the level of public disturbance, and that's a higher standard, and that's, that's a standard that is, is enforced by our, who's department?
Yeah, what I'm getting at is if a U-Haul with 30 Silo Patriots front members unload on the sidewalk and start picking, is that a permitted event?
As long as they're not, as not, as long as they're not blocking the sidewalk, and as long as they're not harassing other pedestrians on that sidewalk.
Is there a size limit or anything like that for that type?
This is all teaching questions, but me, planners, don't get involved with that enforcement.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments to? No. Amy, I'm sorry, I probably had something. You took out the special event type by, like the Liberty Lake car sale and whatnot. On, on a, right away, you put that in as an event such as, if you're going to do that, I think you probably ought to put that back into or not use it. In most places, you didn't use it.
I would rather take them out as an H.
There's one page after this matrix zoning that has that a number of times that I've got with probably the The other thing, again, seen here that I was curious on is, say that you wanted to die a permit for an event because we don't have enough law enforcement to support that event. Some, some venues such as big, big, and I don't, I don't know if you got that in here or not, but some venues, and maybe it's taken into account when they, they provide the permit application, but some venues provide their, say their own security. So, so that can offset not having our enforcement to support an event. Is that taken into account in this, the way it's written?
Yeah, we asked that question on the application.
Okay.
And we'll route them to P for them to view the, to review the application.
So there's ways to mitigate a staffing shortage by the city to support an event?
Absolutely.
And it could be law enforcement or other items too, I suspect. I'm just, okay. And that, so that a venue could happen, the event that maybe those bigger than the staff can support by supplying their own staff, I guess.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Those are the only two comments I had. I thought it was pretty well done. I enjoyed it so good.
Lot of work.
Thank you.
It was.
Do you have, are there any more questions? Or do you want to add anything?
No, we should only get up for public comment. I have several people who've already expressed an interest to comment, and, but there may be more who want to go out of color.
Also, just so you know, for, for public comment, you're limited to three minutes, and I will, I will control that myself up here. Let you know when you exceed that time or get closer.
So the first person I listed to speak is Bonnie Burns.
Oh, that's me. Thank you for your time. Great evening. The reason Liberty Lake gives a temporary permit to those storage containers is because they're ugly. They don't look good. I've been looking at a storage container behind my house for over a year. I live right behind the greenhouse, and there's a storage bin. I live in a beautiful master community. I did not expect to be looking at a storage bin day after day. Yes, you can maybe put trees around it, but there's people across the street whose main part is on the second floor. They see the entire length. They're going to see that as well. I do not want this to stay there. Now, Jim has said that if you don't like it, you can build a permanent structure, and maybe that won't be as pretty. No, not it won't be as pretty, and it'll still be very close. Building across the street. You've got a lovely farm. you've got a lovely farm store. Put some buildings there for your storage, aesthetically nicer for people walking along the trail, nicer for us, because we're not looking at an ugly storage container. And you don't move to a community like where we're at to look at industrial containers. That is not what I pay to for to live at. And I think it should be keeping with your standards that they're temporary. Move it. Don't keep my eyes looking at those every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have listed to speak is Betty Zerba.
Thank you. Uh, Betty Zerba, I live right behind the, uh, greenhouse, and, uh, what I learned tonight from Jim Frank is he made a comment about the HOA would be in charge of making decisions on the farm in the future. Currently, Jim Frank will have, uh, total control over HOA votes until in about four years. Now, that means whatever's going to take place is going, going to be, it's gonna be Jim's idea. Now, in two thousand and twelve, when Bonnie and I purchased our home in April, uh, we were told that our property extended out fifty feet. We go to closing in June, and we're told, oh, you know what, the HOA bought that fifty feet of easement for a green space, and that was done, I believe in October, November of two thousand and eleven, I looked it up. And so we paid more, got less, but were assured by Greenstone representatives that this is good, because the green space behind there, we're gonna put some fruit trees, and we're not, nobody's gonna be able to build because of the power lines. And then, a year and a half ago, all of a sudden, a greenhouse is going up. We were told it was going to be a small greenhouse for the kids to come and learn about growing vegetables. Bonnie and I thought, great, we're all for kids, about teaching, training, didn't see any problem. But then this huge greenhouse goes up, and then this ugly container. Now, as Jim is, is suggesting, of putting up some sort of screen, I'm thinking trucks up to, what, eight feet? Nine feet, but it's still ten feet, or nine point four, or the, the type of the containers. We're still seeing that. And now, also, Jim has been very frank, pun, no pun intended, that, okay, if you make me take out the storage containers, which by law, right now, the City of Liberty Lake does not allow, then we'll put up a building, and we'll block even more of your area. We're between a rock and a hard place. I urge you to request that those, uh, uh, storage containers be removed, and please do not allow open space, because he's gonna put containers or buildings, he just said it's wanted up to four thousand square feet in all of the parks. Do you think Cat Moon Park residents would put up with what we've been putting up with? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have listed to speak is Dana Sheehan. If anyone else is interested in speaking, please go out of line.
Dana Sheehan, and I live at the opposite end with these old big ladies on the other end by the corner of all of these plant work. My concern is the same thing that's happened to them, is that, uh, actually I have a resolution, if it's possible, of course it may open the can of worms. Your Greenstone and Mr. Frank are so involved in having a farm, how about if they don't make, say, two, three, four, five home lots that are north and east of the present farm building?
Yeah.
That would be the resolution I see, but of course it may open the can of worms. But I wish that all consider that, because right now, as he said, the containers are illegal, allowed, so let's do something about it. Nobody has to look at them like these folks. And if they do put in another building, either if it's a garage, you said, sliding in a container, that would get taller than the existing buildings, and it won't even be any better, because it would still block your view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
We'll close citizens' comments at this time. Is there anybody online just referred up before?
Yeah, I did want to point out that Dale Robbins showed at thirty. Oh, it's only five thirty.
But is there any, any citizens on party?
Oh, there are not.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I close citizen comments. Who has the six figures for?
Yes, so, I, so, my, I think it's not perfect. So yeah, so a couple things that I wanted to say, and I'm saying this both with the applicants, as well as the planning commission.
Is there any closure to your mic, please?
Um, so we have, we, uh, are, we're sending out mailings on the, um, notices for, um, the application, these applications in the public hearing for the planning commission tomorrow. The newspaper, it runs on Friday, which means I have to have, by Friday, I have to post the, um, proposed, um, amendments. So Jim, Mike, Amy, I'll include myself, because I've got a couple in here too. If we have any changes to the, um, proposed amendments to the code language, I have to have it by close of business tomorrow. Um, that's, the other thing I want to just remind the planning commission, so, um, Paul Brown has resigned, he's moved out of the city. I think he's still in the area, but not, maybe it was, not, um, living in the city any longer. And so we will be advertising for another planning commission position. We do have one, they can see now, I do have one applicant by one of our, uh, commissioners, I just haven't had the time to try and, uh, coordinate with the mayor to stay with me. Um, having said that, um, it's gonna be very important with the hearings in September, that, um, we have a forum, and so I, I beg you all to make sure your calendar is clear, and, um, and if for some reason you are not gonna be able to make it, please come early. We now have, Amy, now we have seven commissioners, we need four commissioners to have a forum, so I'm not too worried, but I'm just putting all I notice that is that you're ten persons. Really, really important. And that's all I have at the moment.
Yes, September thirteenth is our next meeting, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other commissioners with any ideas?
Well, since September fifteenth is my birthday, I expect cake. No, the candles would burn the place down.
They might be already going there. Okay, I don't have anything else. I, I want to think this is, that Katie and Mr. Frank and Mr. Cora, I forget the, the right, yeah, Mr. Drell's presentations and, you know, do. Uh, thank you all. Can I move adjourned?
So moved, sir.
Okay. You want to move adjourned?